This City Council Workshop Session is in order. And do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, we will look at Kerrville Economic Development Corporation and Mr. Gil Salinas.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Okay, so I'll start with some national and some state indicators and then get down to some of the local stuff that we're doing. As far as national stuff, we were at the IEDC Economic Leadership Summit last week. There were some pretty interesting discussions as far as some of the national trends that they're seeing from the panel of experts. Actually, we participated in some of these discussions. And they basically said now everybody's pretty busy with projects. So there's definitely an uptick as far as project activity throughout the U.S. Much of the business, though, is being done virtual and it will continue to do so through the end of 2021. So as far as COVID now, it's kind of like receding. That activity is starting to pick up. Experts are predicting that upward job growth trend to continue as now we're starting to see more and more people getting jobs. That's, of course, I hope this doesn't happen, but there's some new strain that comes in and puts us back to square one, which is basically a year ago. The challenge is going to be the upscaling of workforce nationwide, especially with those people that haven't worked for about a year now, getting them back into the workforce. At the state level, through the governor's office, we've actually seen a lot of activity coming our way, not just us, but you know, the entire state and more so the central Texas area. We're seeing a lot of RFPs. As a matter of fact, this morning, we had one RFP. And these are huge projects. They're coming in looking at, at the very least, 100,000 square feet in space, available buildings, or 100 to 200 acres of a greenfield site. So there's all huge projects. Some of the bigger ones are upward of about 2 million square feet of industrial space for one project, which obviously we don't have. So there's a lot of activity now that we're seeing and through the state, this started happening right around November before the Thanksgiving holiday when we started seeing this uptick in activity. It's a mix of manufacturing, a lot of distribution centers, and some technology companies. At the local level, here in Kerrville, our unemployment numbers are getting close to pre-COVID levels, where at about 5%, which is 1 and 1/2 to 2 percentage points away from pre-COVID. Sales tax revenue, we know the story there. I mean, we've had a huge, well, sales tax revenues have been looking very good for the last year. And then the other thing is workforce. We know that there was a challenge with workforce before COVID. Our unemployment rate is about 5%, which is at 4%. That's when we're considered at full employment. But we're quickly going to get there, so we are going to continue to have a challenge as far as workforce here in the area moving forward. So we have to be very mindful of that. And we've already seen, there's a couple of companies that are looking at hosting some job fairs. And there's companies that are hiring again. I mean, they've got hiring signs. And in addition to that, KEDC, you know, our pipeline is pretty full with projects. With that, I'll move on to the project pipeline that we have at the KEDC. So Gulf Avionics, after a year-long search, they decided to locate their headquarters and MRO operations in Kerrville. They were looking at San Antonio, the Rio Grande Valley, and the DFW area for their expansion. That's where they have their main corporation headquarters. So over the next 10 years, this company will create about 50 jobs at about $75,000 in average wages. Capital investments, about $1.3 million, and that's going to be primarily for the equipment. And they're going to be requiring a medium to about a high skill set, a lot of technicians. So this is a great opportunity for some of the kids that are graduating from our high schools that are not necessarily looking to go to college or to a university. This is a good opportunity for them. Company's already settled into their space, which is about 7,000 square feet at the airport. And we're now talking about potential expansions with them. So Zen Economic Development Organization, this is a great opportunity for us to really look at their parent company, which is RBR Aviation. They've got about six, seven different companies under that umbrella. And our goal is to come in and try to get three, maybe four of those companies here in the area as well. Again, just being proactive and creative. Mark McDaniel, myself, we've visited on several occasions about this project and we've agreed that if done right, being creative, this could have the economic potential of another Sky Master. But again, you know, where they've just settled in, they're settling in, so we're about a year out before we start really looking at how they can expand here in the area. We're working with the company. Matter of fact, yesterday, we sent out, two weeks ago, the press release went out locally, but at the national level, we sent that out on Monday, which is different from the local press release. And so we're working to get them into some aviation, trade publications, just some national news outlets. So we already have General Aviation News, they've picked it up. Aviation Maintenance is running press release, General Aviation News, we've got an interview pending with them. San Antonio Business Journal will be here actually tomorrow, we'll be talking to them. Austin Business Journal is still pending, but they've indicated some interest as well. So again, just getting that, the story of Kerrville out there. I'd like to point out a little bit on synergies. We hosted a meeting last month between the Gulf Avionics Project Real Jet, which is an avionics school that's been looking at the area for a while, and then Killdeer. And it was very interesting to be sitting in that particular meeting and, you know, they're nerding me, which is in economic development, just looking at how those conversations and discussions started to really form as far as collaboration of those three different companies, you know, talking about vendors, suppliers, you know, hosting a, you know, co-hosting like a job fair and looking at sharing workforce. And not necessarily that they would be sharing employees, but looking at how best to grow our aviation and aerospace talent pool in the area so they can have more options here as far as workers. So again, very interesting to see how they've started, those discussions really started taking off. Killdeer, they've already created a handful of jobs. They've hired an HR person and they're in the process of pre-permanent, permanently relocating some of their workers from the North Dakota facility. So when a new company comes into a community, one of the first things that they do is hire a plant manager, or it could be the director of operations and the HR person, in no specific order. Those are the first two people that they hire. So in this case, they've already done that. Once they do that, then everything starts to fall into place. They've already started tapping into Texas Workforce Training Funds because now they're in the process of hiring people. Moving on to some other projects, Project Point, that is an IT company that's headquartered in South Dakota. They've been looking at our area for a few months now. It's a midsize operation. They need about 20,000 to 25,000 square feet of space. They're looking to create about 200 jobs over the next five years. Wages are between $75,000 and $100,000 in salaries. The key for them will be access to broadband, which I know we've had those discussions before, talent, which is basically the workforce, and then the price and the reliability of power in the area. So those are the driving factors for this company. We know that they're looking at other areas in central Texas and/or perhaps expanding at their South Dakota facility. So for me, all I need to know is who's my competition here in Texas, because I'm pretty familiar with all the different communities and their EDOs, and I can tell right off the bat if they're proactive or not. Another company that we have is Ammo, which is headquartered, and I have no idea, this is in South Dakota, I have no idea how we got on the radar for companies from the Dakotas, but we have. They're looking at the area, very, very preliminary. They're looking at, it's an ammunition manufacturing operation. They'd be looking at about, they need a 40,000 square foot facility, looking at about 20 jobs in the first year, paying between $14 and $17 an hour, which puts us right at the average county wage, which is, which is, yes, we want those kinds of companies. And then they would be at 100 jobs by year five. We don't have capital investment numbers yet. We've had a couple of discussions with them. Again, preliminary, we're on the radar. They need to be in operation by the first quarter of 2022, so it gives us some time. Project Cobalt, that is a tier-one supplier to an automotive OEM. They're from the Midwest. And an OEM is basically the top of the pyramid. That's kind of like a Chrysler, Ford, Toyota, GM. The tier-one is a company that's right, you know, beneath them that supplies to them. Then the tier-two supply to the tier-ones, tier-threes, and you get your ancillary business, vendors, and then your ancillary jobs. So this is a tier-one, which is definitely, you know, Killdeer is a tier-one supplier to an MRO, which is Boeing and Lockheed Martin. We've had two discussions with them about supply chain. They're looking at central and south Texas. The project is still about a year out, or at the end of the year, they plan to start their site selection process. They're looking at about 80 to 100 employees paying above county wages, average county wages. We don't have capital investment numbers yet, but the OEM has asked them that they need to be in Texas. Hence, that's how we come into play. And it's interesting because when we called them up, they're like, you know, "How'd you know about our project?" I'm like, "That's what we do." So we got on the radar even before they started the site selection process, and there's a whole formula that goes into that. And to me, again, it's just, you know, they said, you know, they Googled Kerrville and they said, "Well, you guys are a little too small." Like, that's fine, all we're asking is just give us a shot. I'll do the rest. I'll move on to the Entrepreneur Center. So that's something that we've been working on with the mayor for a while now. So we're now finishing up the strategic planning phase of a Entrepreneur Center, which is now moving into the planning of an actual launch of this particular center, which, I don't want to blame it on COVID, but it's COVID, will be virtual, which actually allows us and gives us the opportunity to really allow us to grow it and then eventually get into a bricks and mortar, which is still about a year down the road. Claudia Richards, she's one of the newest members of our team. She joined us specifically to help us launch this project. So she's already, and she's a local, she's one of our 40 Under 40 recipients. She's already identified an extensive list of individual business members, potential business members for this center. The membership, what all would be included is some virtual events, webinars, access to some mentors, continuous development, education, educational courses, and then an opportunity, and here's the meat of the actual program, an opportunity at resources and tools at their disposition, such as federal funding, or perhaps angel investors, so on and so forth. We've already developed a curriculum for the first six months, as well as some of the volunteers that we're looking at. We might potentially already have a first prospect, a company that's not from Kerrville, from the outside, coming in from the outside in. It's a company that's in technology, that's, well, they're looking at coming in and incubating at our Entrepreneur Center, which would be very good for the area, and helping us launch a facility as well. We've already gotten partnership commitments from the Office of the Governor, their Small Business Division, so they want to, you know, have their flag here. Texas Workforce Commission as well, the SBA and their Core Program. We met with them a couple of weeks ago, and they said that they definitely want to be a part of this. And then there's also some possible opportunities with some international groups, specifically out of Mexico and then Asia. A little bit more on that here in a bit. So again, this is going to be a great opportunity for some of, and tool for some of our local entrepreneurs, some of the existing small businesses that want to get their business to the next level. And again, we're going to have some training sessions, an international business forum. And then on April 13th, which is when we're looking to debut the actual center and some of the programs, we're going to have our first Leadership Mastermind Series, which is huge for millennials. So we're in the process of promoting that here in Kerrville, and we've already got some people that are very interested in that Leadership Mastermind Series. Moving on to industry roundtable, so we're hosting our second industry roundtable this Thursday. The first one for the year was in December, and that was the IEDC President Jeff Enkel. He came in and spoke to some of our local businesses. And this industry roundtable is on a quarterly basis, and it's very specific to our 15 large and top employers. When you look at our 15 top employers, taking government and education out of it, we're talking about the private sector, you're looking at about 6,000 to 7,000 employees. So that's a group that we want to work with as far as having these roundtable discussions. The Entrepreneur Center, as you can see, that's more on the small business level and with the entrepreneurs. So this Thursday, we have Austin Brooklyn, which is a cybersecurity company, coming in to talk about trends in cybersecurity and what companies can do and the community can do as far as training the local workforce. And this, it's not a new field, but a field that's definitely going to be very important in the next five to 10 years. Okay, so now coming back to, I had mentioned, Asia. The Governor's Office of Economic Development has partnered with the Tokyo Metropolitan Government to help Texas and Tokyo companies explore expansion opportunities. So the both, the Texas, the Governor's Office as well as Tokyo, they're looking to work with their small to mid-sized companies and medium enterprises, which are SMEs. And they're looking at, because the one thing is that the major markets, the Houston's, Dallas's, San Antonio's, they already have those relationships with Japan and other countries around the world. So they now want to start working with some of the mid-sized cities as far as getting, developing those lines of communication. So they asked us if we wanted to be a part of this coalition. We're not a mid-sized city, we're more of a metropolitan area, but when they ask, we're like, "Absolutely." I mean, we want to be a part of whatever it is that you're going to be working on. So they're planning an event for this fall, which would be an inbound trade mission, companies from Tokyo coming in to look to do business with some of these mid-sized markets. And what I like about this is that, you know, let's just say we do get a visit, you know, some visits from this trade mission and some of these companies from Japan, we already have a venue for them, which is the Entrepreneur Center, for some of these companies to come in and say, "Well, we're not very familiar, we're doing business in Texas." Well, here comes the Entrepreneur Center, where you can actually learn, you know, incubate from there and learn how to do business in the state of Texas. So there's a little bit of science that goes into everything that we're doing as far as connecting the dots, making some of these projects happen. So, all right, so now in closing, this is not news, but housing in central Texas is in huge demand, more so than before COVID. We already heard, I mean, there's, you know, we were approached by OWLE, which is the furniture manufacturing company just on the other side of the county line on I-10, and they're hiring 200 people within the first year, and they're going to be at about 400 people in the next three years. And they asked us, like, "Hey, we need people." So they're having a job here, job fair. Gulf Avionics and Killdeer, they're looking at hosting something as well. The State Hospital is looking for people. Remote workers, we're getting some of those calls, that, you know, people that are leaving the urban areas, specifically Austin and San Antonio, and no pun intended, but they're running to the hills. You know, they want to come to an area where they can work remotely from. So Kerrville is on the radar of many people right now. Part of it is the allure of the Texas Hill Country, that's why I'm here. Part of it is COVID. California, that's a big, that's a big one as far as people leaving that state wanting to set up in a nice area in Texas and do business from. And then also part of it is our work with the recruitment, and now that we're starting to promote the area. And then word of mouth, I mean, we've already gotten, you know, a couple of instances where some people have said, like, "Hey, you know, we're referred to you all by the Governor's Office because they said we should talk to you, we want to go to the Hill Country." So all these things are starting to come together. And I like to say that it's kind of a scenario of a cascading effect. You know, two years ago, I don't think we were there yet. A year ago, we were already almost in that position. And all it takes is one major announcement, which in our case was the Killdeer announcement, to really set the wheels in motion. And that's exactly where we're at. Those wheels are in motion now. And I like to say that it's, what we're witnessing right now is success, breeding success. So just in a nutshell, get ready, because we're in for quite a ride.
Yeah.
That concludes my report.
I know. I wish we had time for questions, but we have got a couple more items. You're working on too many projects.
Okay.
No, I'm kidding. But in terms of the report, I mean, it's just, you know, fascinating, but...
It's great, Gil. You're wearing me out.
Good luck with the San Antonio Business Journal tomorrow.
All right, yeah, thank you. That's a big one for us, for the community.
Really?
But there's no Q and A. I definitely, you all have my mobile number or my email address, definitely reach out to me, I'll make the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. You're doing a good job.
Good afternoon. How are y'all doing?
Good, good.
I think it should be set up so that, there it is, the presentation's going to be up there. So this is our quarterly report. We were scheduled to do this, our last workshop, but now we're doing it this time around. And so I will be as brief as possible to get y'all ready for this evening. So first thing I'm going to talk about is development services and some of the improvements and some of the ongoing actions that we're doing. So from a corrective or continuous improvement standpoint, one of the processes that we're really looking at and deep diving is the stop work order process. We're looking at developing a procedure, we're looking at new forms, so that it makes it a little bit better to communicate to the citizens when we do provide a stop work order. But it's also trying to synergize the work that's being done between the chief building official and code enforcement. And that's kind of that disconnect that we have found as we evaluate that process. And so we're trying to make that work a little bit better. Improve the process for a planning case, this is Lean Six Sigma Project, this is actually being worked on by Drew. We had a little bit of delays on this project, but we're starting to make forward. It's actually more in the improve phase now. And this project is going to look at implementing my government online for the planning side. We've already got a portion of it, but there's some pieces that are still missing. Improve the case processing for health, that's in the control phase. This is basically the full implementation of my government online for the Health Department. This is basically what Darryl Poe uses now, and he is able to do a lot of the inspections on-site and use an iPad instead of going back and doing paperwork and docking it up that way. He can do it all off his iPad. And so that's where we're at basically now, is him writing the work instructions for this project so we can close it out. Some major projects that are being worked on here at the city, just to give you an idea of some of the projects, we have HEB. HEB, they're basically have started to, the barbecue edition, started to work on that piece. Phase two, the gas station and the car wash, those are in the plan review, and there's some other discussions going along with that. The middle school, their goal is to be done by May. As of yesterday, in my conversation one-on-one with the chief building official, was that they are now starting with sheet rocking, they're doing some electrical and some plumbing finals, so they're starting to move along very nicely. The landing, phase one, they were hoping to finish phase one early spring, but they had some delays, especially with some of the buildings being damaged by water pipe bursting. But overall, they have the clubhouse, building seven and eight, and two additional buildings that we just issued, and I don't have the number for those buildings. But in total, there's four buildings that now have certificates of occupancy. So they're just moving along slowly. And for phase two, they're looking at midsummer, starting phase two. That's the communication they've given to us at this point in time. Trinity Church, they've done some site work, they've done some foundational work and some rough-in plumbing at this point in time as well. USDA complex, they've submitted a permit for a teardown for building one, and some of their other projects, they're in plan review and waiting for an asbestos report. So we haven't gotten that back yet to give them a full review of their plans. And then the Doyle Community Center, we've, the agreement was passed by y'all not too long ago, and some of the projects, and the project's also in plan review at this point in time. And then we have Arby's. So they've gotten so far a teardown that's been completed, and we're still doing some plan review, but ready to give them their permit. I'm sorry, this one's, actually, the permit's already been issued. And then Dunkin' Donuts/Baskin Robbins, they're in plan review now. So that's some of the things for development services. Code enforcement, one of the things, our net program, we haven't forgotten about our neighborhood enhancement program, so we're gearing that up right now. Donna has been working hard in phase two. Phase one has been complete, that's the area in blue. She's working in phase two, and we've actually broken up phase two into two different phases. One is on the east of the street, escapes me, I think it's Barnett. So everything on north of Barnett is going to be phase two, phase one is going to be below it. And so Donna has been working out there right now, trying to get some applications, and she went and visited some of the homes this morning to talk to the homeowners about what exact needs that they need and trying to get a sense of what projects we're going to work on. And so she's already gathering some volunteers, she's already trying to organize to work on these particular homes in that phase one area. So we're looking at April-ish timeframe, maybe even to late spring to finish phase one, and then look at starting phase two and finishing phase two either early summer or in early, early fall, just depends on our timing. But that's the area that we're targeting overall. And so we've gotten a lot of applications, and again, she's filtering through that, those applications to make sure, because we're not going to do some of the work that they want, like interior work in the house. A lot of what we're trying to do is exterior. So, and then this is just a performance dashboard that y'all seen in the past, just to kind of give you an idea of our revenue up through January, end of January is $240,000. Expenses, $315,000. We're a little bit behind on budget compared to last year, but last year, we had a lot of big projects that came in right at the beginning of the year. And so we're hoping as we go forward that some of these other projects start coming in and, you know, increase our revenue over time, but we are depending on the projects that are coming in. Building-wise, total number of permits have come in is 608. We have an 86% plan review within 10 days. That number has fluctuated a little because of some issues in regards to some of the plan reviews, but for the most part, we're doing really good on our response. Code enforcement, she's done 195 cases. Total compliance, over 99%. Planning, total number of plaques have come in is 13, and been able to review those plaques within 30 days at 100% rate. And if you just look at the building, commercial values that come in is 1.6 million. Square foot that we've captured is 105 square feet. And then, of course, when you look at commercial versus residential, residential permits is 428 versus 180. And then code enforcement, she's done 104 reactive versus 91 proactive. And then you can just see the trends on the right-hand side about the code, how they compare to the previous years. And then, of course, planning and zoning, you have four cases, zoning boards of adjustments, four cases. And again, this is only up till the end of January, so it's still missing some data, but we've been pretty busy. So let's talk a little bit about some other continuous improvement objectives. So one of the things that, of course, we use the Lean Six Sigma Program to try to identify and improve different processes throughout the city. And so we've trained a number of individuals, we're about 20 green belts that we've trained throughout the city to work on projects and try to make them better. And so right now, as of January, the actual total savings that we've been able to capture is $463,000. Of that is 220,000 of that is hard savings and 242,000 is soft savings. So we've been working very hard, and you can see over the last few years, didn't change page, over the last few years since 2018, you can see that number just continually increasing. And one of the things that we are doing, instead of getting a new class, because we kind of lost last year with COVID and then a whole bunch of other things, so we're taking this fiscal year to really concentrate on the projects that we already had ongoing, finishing those up and starting some new projects, and then rolling into the next fiscal year with a new wave of green belts. And then also, one of the things that we're targeting is identifying some individuals within our green belt cadre to become black belts. And when you become a black belt, that's when they get additional responsibilities and they're able to help mentor some of these green belts. So we are now multiplying the number of projects that we can work on across the board and mentor these green belts across the board as well. Number of projects per phase, you can see we have 26 projects that are closed, we have three that are in control phase, but there's some, a lot of projects are in the improve phase, and we can just move those down. And some of the newer projects are still being defined overall. And then you can just see the different projects, how they're completed over here. And then on the other, other slides, sorry, didn't change, you have, you can see it by savings per fund, you can see the general fund by far is the fund that we have the largest savings compared to the other funds. That's the water fund, the development services fund, and the garage fund that we have. And this is just a list of the projects that we're working on that are closed, that are defined, that are improving, they're in the control phase. And so I'm not going to go through each one of them, but just give you a list of the projects that we're working on across the board. projects that we're working on across the board. Speaking of municipal court, some of the things that we're implementing, the Citation Smart, we basically have the process already, ready to run and ready to be utilized, but because there was some turnover in municipal court, we decided that we would wait, so we're looking at either mid-March to late March at this point in time to get that rolling, as the other staff now picks up the understanding of the other processes. But this is something that allows citizens, from their phone, if you recall, to either pay their citations or view their citations and make arrangements via their phone. Then the LPR system, which is the license plate recognition system, that was put in place late January, if I remember correctly, and has been starting to be used. One of the things that we haven't quite figured out is the reporting side of it, but we're working to figure out the reporting. I know that when we last looked at it, he had over 100 and something, no, I'm sorry, over 1,000 hits on the system, but that doesn't mean those are all our, our individuals that we're looking for that have warrants. So there's a lot of things that are going on through there. So we're trying to figure out the reporting side of that, but overall, he's starting to utilize the system, identifying individuals, making contact with all those individuals, bringing them into municipal court to try to pay their warrants or make some arrangements, and then go from there. Questions?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the dashboard from some time ago, under planning, percent of plaits processed in 30 days, it's 100%. It's again, 100%.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. As soon as they come in, staff starts reviewing those as quickly as possible, because we know we're under that shot clock, even though we haven't made the changes in the subdivision code, we're already working as hard as we can to get those plaits reviewed as quickly as possible and turned around before that 30-day time period.
Yeah, okay, all right.